All right, we're ready for our thirty meetings of order.
Let's begin to speak with the flag of the United States of America as we the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as its own.
Mrs. Mulberry.
Here.
Mrs. Bell.
Here.
Mrs. Selkman. Mrs. Grisham.
Present.
Mrs. Jarrett.
Here.
Mrs. Markle.
Here.
Mrs. Olson.
Here.
And Mr. Scott here, and Mrs. Thompson.
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. And moving on to the superintendent.
All right, today was a very exciting day. Today was the first day we were able to welcome our teachers back to start the 24-25 school year. Always a lot of fun getting everybody together. I know it's always been very sweet for our teachers. Summer is officially over, but it's the start of another exciting year. So we're extremely excited about that. Today was filled with AM in-service where mainly they had to sit and listen to me. And then in the afternoon, we did a fair amount of community service. Some, I know, was going around social media, we'll talk about that in a little bit. But I'd actually like to turn it over to Mrs. Owens just to highlight a couple of the things that were going on today.
Hello, I'm so happy that Mr. Mulberry asked me to speak about. Hi guys. Speak about our afternoon because it was, it was an amazing afternoon. So we are a service industry in New York education, we serve community every day. That includes throughout the year, teachers are always coming in donating to help out in whatever they can to the community. But that's why this really required an afternoon of community, required a community service. It was an afternoon of community because it wasn't only about community service, it was about community engagement, community partnership. And you know, today was also about us showing how much we do care about our community and we want our schools to be a hub of our community. We want to work together, organization in our community. So that being said, the idea of kicking this year off this way was really born out of the freshman level community, which was born out of speaking in community meetings. And everyone agreed that we did want to do community service in some way, somehow. We didn't know when, we didn't know if it was a full day, a half day. But then we figured what a better way to kick off the year is to model that community behavior we want to see and have all of our staff feel good about themselves. So we started off the day by asking everybody to bring in a bunch of perishable items and then for us to donate to our local food bank, which was going to be same heart as well as Earl. So we have truckload of items to take there tomorrow morning. And then we had a nice kickoff, which was like Mr. Mulberry said, if you listen to this, and other people in the auditorium. Then after lunch was when all the other projects took place. So I won't do the follow-up, but I am listening to them all. I've studied more exactly, Helping Harvest, they provide our food bags that we give to children. So we had a bunch of people go there and help them package food. In this case, they actually packaged food or something. I don't have a background for that one, but we helped United Way, United Way helped us to come up with an idea of making sandwiches for a place called New Journeys. Eighty-four hundred, four hundred fifty sandwiches daily. And we get other organizations to help, but so we're going to take that to them tomorrow. The Apple S P D, a bunch of people went there and they actually got to take the dogs out for the day, dogs stay out. So they made some dogs very happy. All of our buildings also have little projects that we did, those budgets that we can't get to during the year. And we just had a time, if you say to us, do you want to spend time helping kids? We're doing cleaning out closets, we're helping kids. So the day was about doing those little extra projects, beautifying the gardens, beautifying the, getting these picnic tables that are just all disgusting and no one wants to sit at. So we beautified those bulletin boards that just still be collected, a lot of those back there. At the middle school and the intermediate center, the libraries that the organized books and. Shady Hollow Assisted Writing, they help a lot of children special needs. A bunch of our teachers went there and it's got to know what they do in our community for our children. Rock Hollow Woods, that's in the third circle, but I would say kind of down the street, I'm not sure which is. But they, a lot of our people were there for camps. And so a lot of teachers went there and cleaned up the trails and helped in their library and got to know a little bit more about what they do so that they can partner with them in the future. And then our laser foundation, they have a lot of work to do organizing some of the items that they get for their food market each year. So a lot of people worked there. I know I'm already talking too much, but the feedback, it is just amazing. The way, again, the way we were being felt afterwards, just that feeling of accomplishment, that feeling of going back to the community. Lots of smiles, we have lots of pictures to share, to group share on social media once they get compiled. But so when we, the other thing we did happen here was, I think it was support costs, was we went to all four buildings and incoming students. So middle school was like incoming fifth grader, incoming second graders, incoming kindergarteners, and incoming second graders. We had groups of people go out to every single home. So one group had about twelve homes to visit on average. And we went, we dropped off postcards that basically just welcomed them the first day of school, gave them all contact information. And in some cases, we got to actually see the students if they were home. And as I say, they had their questions, who's your teacher? And try to get them excited about coming to school next Monday. So lots of positive feedback from that. And last, Mr. Mulberry and I went out to about twelve homes and probably was successfully able to talk to people about half of them. And it was a really, really great experience. And the kids' faces were priceless and the parents were very appreciative. So it was awesome that.
Yeah, it also was beneficial that transportation information came out today too. So we could remind them, you know, go to the half, check it out if you have any questions. So it was a way for us to be able to handle a lot of questions before any frustration got setting. Obviously, we all do monitor some social media and they're always handling it. Don't like the ideas, but way more positivity than very negativity on it. So we let me do this, this was just an idea, they came up organically and I think a lot of good came out of it. So we're excited about that. The second thing that I do want to share as part of the superintendent report is just this document. This is our style guide, which we never had before as a school district. So everything from what is our color, what blue is that? And what font do we have? What does our letterhead look like? What does our signature line look like? What should this brand of a room really appear, appear like? So we do have everything in here. There is one thing actually on page three that I want to point out because everything else is pretty straightforward. When it comes to font, the font that we ended up selecting is called Poppins. It has nothing to do with Mary Poppins, it's just called that. It's one of the three Google fonts, you want to make sure it's something that's accessible for others to use and integrates with a lot of things. It gives you a lot of flexibility, go back to page three for a second. We have up top, we clearly defined, defined with X codes, CNYK codes, RGB codes. We have all of that for our primary colors. However, it is always nice to have one accent color that you can constantly randomly on a website, on a document, not to be used very much at all. Informally, we've been doing this, but it's never really been identified. That's what that yellow is down at the bottom, right? It is not a primary color over this, right? Again, it's been informally used in the past, but we thought if it's going to be used, we should define what that actually is. So we don't end up with everybody else creating their own versions of that. And it doesn't, you know, doesn't exactly correctly, we identified it as grades. We even identified the black and the white. I mean, it is, it is very explicit about what our brand is. And I encourage you to, you know, page through at your leisure. And you know, if you have any questions, by all means, don't hesitate to reach out. This is something that we, again, never had before. Feedback is always welcome and it's something that we've got a lot of eyes as we go, but we needed to start in place and now we have. Thank you, that concludes the superintendent report. Thank you, Mr. Mulberry.
All right. Do not have any agenda edits. Sees as public participation. Prayer statements that would be raised in the board should have common sense with the president, card should be addressed. Comments or agenda items we gave by vice chair, should point and state your name and address, sign the notes you provided. We will grant up to three minutes to address the board. If your time is short, we will start when you begin to speak. When three minutes are over, you will be asked to see. Any item that is not in the agenda as well as agenda items acted upon, comments will be made in designated section at the end of the agenda. And we will have presentation by the agenda items.
I think Bell will start to read. Thank you. I'll give you plenty of time to read yours.
Does Martino have any township? This is regarding agenda item three point eight point four. Tonight this school board destroys the vote on work clothes on homeowners having paid school property taxes. As a last meeting, I commented how ironic, contradiction that on one hand, the board is expressing compassion for the homeowners, but on the other hand continues to raise taxes. When I come to this podium so often to speak in these meetings is because you're hurting people. Especially people on fixed incomes. At the very least, you're forcing them to choose between using their limited income to pay taxes while foregiving other purchases. And you have a captive audience. For instance, if coal gets too expensive, they could buy a school brand suit. But if school property taxes get too high, they have few options considering the current housing market and interest rates. I moved to this school district in two thousand and three, retired and attended my first school board meeting in two thousand and four. In the twenty-one years I've lived here, the mortgage rate of my home has increased seventy-eight percent. My income has not. Your CFO made the comment that the school property tax increase is only ten to twelve dollars a month while not considering other increases. School property taxes are the one and only residential expense you have the ability to control. The world is in a vacuum and the school board administration need to come to a realization of what your increase in addition to all the other increased expenses is due into the residents who've been elected or hired to represent. You recently voted to increase school property taxes by three point seven five percent. Orange County taxes increased by eight point nine nine percent. How many township taxes increased by three point seven seven percent? How many township sewer bills are increasing by seventeen point nine three percent? Let's not forget electric gas and other utility rate increases for homeowner and auto insurance. And would anyone care to discuss food prices? So I can't wait to hear the discussion of people not being able to afford paying their school property taxes. You've boxed yourselves into a corner since you can't forgive the school property taxes of one homeowner without forgiving for all of us. But what you can do for a start is stop pretending to lower taxes sometime in the future and instead rebate the unnecessary school property tax increase you recently imposed now before the money gets spent. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
Any other presentation available? Heransons, we will be presenting a session after tonight's meeting to discuss security and personnel. I am going to have two presentations coming. First is going to be by Edward Albert of PARs, DA Association of Rural and Small Schools.
All right, Dr. Albert, can you hear us?
Yes, I'm ready to go.
Okay, excellent.
Well, a good evening. First of all, I'd like to thank a few people, I'd like to thank Thomas for his leadership in getting me to come to this. You are a member of PARs and it's advantageous to be a member of PARs. And secondly, I'd like to thank the school board for serving as school board directors. My father, this is now three years, was a school board member for over thirty years in the former eleven school district. So I kind of have firsthand knowledge, not only with my own experience, but with my father looking at education through a few different lenses. I will tell you a side note, in two thousand and nine, I was in the photograph for the superintendent's position in Daniel Boone School District. I passed out to the Ariado. And then shortly after that, I became the superintendent of Topa Hagan School District, which I'll talk about a little bit later on. So Thomas being, I was saying, a member of the PARs organization, asked me to talk tonight for about ten minutes about the budget. I have been, I talked twice with Thomas about this and also the CFO, I'm sorry, his name slips from me right now. And I kind of, in ten minutes, if I could explain the entire budget to you, folks, I would be on tour because that's a very difficult thing to do. There's, there's a lot of concerns out there and let me try to address that. First of all, for years, the way funding was done, and it was interesting to hear the comment from the concerned taxpayer, I couldn't hear it all. So, but in nineteen seventy-three, this state provided almost a fifty percent of a school district's budget. The state's not doing that anymore. The burden falls on taxpayers. Legislators, legislators who run, and I was in Brooks County for seven years. Legislators who run all over the Commonwealth keep saying they're going to eliminate property tax, they're going to eliminate property tax, they're going to eliminate property tax. When they were put to the task of eliminating property tax, indeed, they didn't do that. They came up with a bill called Act One. So they dodged it to a degree and it falls back on the school districts again. So when individuals say they're going to eliminate property tax, that's, I take that with a grain of salt because it really doesn't happen and it's not the best of systems, but it is the system we have. So now let's go to budget, let's go to money. As far as this was, let's get to money then after that. The districts would get money based on who they knew, there wasn't really any set formula, it was on average daily memberships. And it was really a mess. So about nine years ago, they came out with something called B E S. I remember going around the state, making presentations to districts. They came out with this basic education funding formula. And then most recently, because you're a member of PARs, PARs was only one of two organizations that were part of the lawsuit. And we won the lawsuit based on the fact that schools are not properly funded. You think you're in bad shape? I can take you to the Austin School District, which has maybe, I don't know, twelve kids a class, twelve classes, about a hundred and forty-four kids. And they have nothing around them to tax. So let me go down that burden a little bit because I have firsthand knowledge of it. If you're at Daniel Boone and you're comparing yourself to Topa Hagan, you're comparing yourself apples to oranges. When I was in the Topa Hagan area school district, we didn't raise taxes five out of seven years. The reason we didn't have to raise taxes five out of seven years is because we have a highway that goes through Topa Hagan, it's called I-78. Since I left Topa Hagan in two thousand and fifteen, they not have only not raised taxes. They also gave tax, they lowered the mileage significantly, no, but they lowered the mileage. So to compare Daniel Boone to a Topa Hagan, you really can't do it because they have Pets Morn out there, Dollar General, and we can go on and on, they have warehouses where they get a lot of revenue and there's not a lot of houses and kids coming to school. So this year, you did get more money in special education. The argument and the discussion you could have is, and this is a discussion that has gone on for years, would be, well, should we tax people a little bit each year? Or should we not tax and then when we need it, really tax? So let me give you a comparison, an analogy I like to use. If somebody comes to your doorstep and they knock on the door and they say that they're selling candy bars for a dollar, most likely, everybody can come up with four quarters, ten dimes, whatever, a dollar and they'll buy a candy bar. Close the door and call it a day. Whereas that kid didn't come to your door for several years, so you didn't have to spend a dollar. But then he came to your door one day, knocked on the paper and said, hey, I'm no longer selling candy bars. I'm selling wrapping paper and the wrapping paper costs eighteen dollars. You're going to have to think twice about it. When it comes to taxes, and I'm not telling you what to do or what not, I'm just telling you some things you should think about. I'm not sitting here and saying raise taxes a little bit each year. However, there have been school districts, in my estimation, and I'm sorry I couldn't be with you in person tonight because I'm in state college, I'm giving a keynote speech tomorrow in a school district that I gave one today out in Pittsburgh. So I'm glad Thomas could set it up this way. But some school districts don't raise taxes at all. And the next analogy I'm going to use is duct tape. Now I'm not being flippant when I say this, I said this when I was a superintendent. You can put duct tape on the earth and prevent water coming into classrooms. And you can get away with that, you can win the battle when you lose the water. What I mean by that is you can put duct tape on for several years and say no water. But eventually, when the water does start making to, you don't really need to put shingles on now. You don't really need to put the tar paper on now, but you need to replace the water and it's going to be a significant cost. So I can't sit here and say what you did in the past was good, what you did in the past wasn't. I will also say this, I have an eighty-seven, an eighty-eight-year-old mother, my father passed away, who's on a fixed income. I don't mind sharing, I agree with you, sixteen hundred dollars social security, seven hundred dollar pension. So do the math, that's what she gets each month. I do her finances. I sit there and find out that the HOA goes up at the school districts, she's on the form while I'm in the school district. And when the form while I'm in the school district, taxes go up and things like that, it's a tough pill to swallow. But in the same token, I have to defend the educators to say, hey, we got to educate kids. So let's look at where you were this year. You got more money in special education, which was a godsend. We fought the state and said, hey, more money is to be needed. We wanted the state to come out and say, here's how we're going to fund schools for the next seven years. That fell short, but we won a very historic lawsuit on funding because we know it's not right. We know it needs to be fixed. With that said, the good news for you is this, when they came out with the formula, and the formula, the best way I can explain the formula to you is think of dominos all over the place and if you have one domino, it affects another domino, it affects this. So let's say one domino is you tax a lot. Well, that can be, that can affect other factors in the funding formula. Let's say if you don't tax a lot, that can affect other components of the formula. So let me just share with this, share this with you. The general, sadly, and the governor negotiated move to cut the, the part of the budget from sixty-six percentile and it was supposed to be at the ninetieth percentile. That changed some things, that changed the L E E C I number in your school district. That was one thing, and I sent this information on to your business manager as well. So there's a lot of multiplies, like in your, multipliers, like in your local effort, the calculation for that, et cetera, et cetera. One good news is, and I think this is a very good part, the state doesn't look at you at this time. You maybe, you might want to be happy that you're not now being labeled as, by the state, as a high tax district. So the state right now with the formula that they use, they're not really looking at Daniel Boone as a high district that is taxed based on the formula that they use. Now I know I've been speaking to you probably for about seven minutes now, you're probably sitting there and scratching your head and saying, is this making sense? The formula is very, very complex, it's very, very complicated and it has a lot of different effects, moving this, that, this, to that. You should be ahead and you got more special edge money. And your V E F was not exactly what you wanted, but again, special edge was more money. So I would suggest that if you really want to do a deep dive into this, are you a member of ASBO, ASBO, Thomas?
Yes.
Okay, there's a gentleman, but it even Dr. Tim Schrum, he is the best of the best. When I have to make a presentation to a school district, I reach out to him. Tim used to be the business manager of the Salico School District. He is the dean of budgets, he's the dean of formulas. He is a very intelligent, down-to-earth gentleman. I would suggest that if you really would want to do a deep dive into this, and again, I should apologize for having me kind of give a little bit of an overview. I would say to you that I would probably bring in Tim, because you're a member of ASBO and you can do that. And he could go through probably, I would say, a two-hour presentation of giving you why you get money here, why don't you get money there, why did your special edge go up, why did you be, have not be what it's supposed to be, et cetera, et cetera. So that kind of is what I wanted to talk to you about. I would caution you about comparing, if you do, I don't know if you do or you don't, comparing the districts. I can say that when we went through the lawsuit, I certainly couldn't take the stand for the lawsuit because the other side would have said, did you ever tax, did you ever have taxing? Is it Topa Hagan? I'd sit there and say no, and then he would turn around and say, but yet as soon as they took more money. Yeah, as soon as they took more money because this district's not as fortunate as Topa Hagan and some others who can generate tax money and not have to be able to raise taxes. My part goes out big time for people who want to fix the economy. But this isn't just a nine-person problem, this is a statewide problem. There has been discussions talking about raising sales tax and using that, there's been discussion about lowering taxes. I can tell you one thing, if you bring in, and not that I'm shocked when this all by any means, so we all have a certain knowledge of depth and information related to taxes. If you were to bring in a guy like Tim Schrum, he would be able to give you an in-depth look and really give you a crystal clear picture of why one thing happens to another. Good news is tonight is the state's not recognizing you as a high tax district. You're probably on the cusp, there's some people who believe that if you tax too much and you don't get enough money. There's some people who believe that if you don't tax as much, you get more. But then, that's a simple, that's a simple concept of what I'm, but then what happens is you have so many other factors that fight into that that makes it more complicated. You would almost be sitting here tonight thinking, how can I see his picture when he's in state college and you're in the Daniel Boone School District? How does that work? You start thinking about that when you're watching TV, you could drive yourself crazy. This budget should be very complex, you can't drive yourself crazy at all. But I think it behooves you as board members to have a little bit of more in-depth look at what you're doing with your budget and how those monies come through. We will continue as PARs to fight the fight, get money for districts. I may go back to my beginning statement. In nineteen seventy-three, the state funded school districts at the rate of fifty percent. I'd be willing to bet that you're probably being funded right now around twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three percent. That means the burden falls back on taxpayers. And that means those taxpayers, many of them, eighty percent of them in most communities, because you have twenty percent of the taxpayers to the kids go to your school, the eighty percent don't have. The eighty percent don't have kids in school. It's called the eighty-twenty threshold. They're on fixed income and they're paying, they're chipping. I will say one thing to you. As a result of me talking to you tonight, I'll explain one other thing to you. Several years, Daniel Boone was a very active member of ours. Then you went through some leadership and you dropped membership. It's fine. I would tell you that the membership cost during COVID, we dropped the membership down to about seven hundred and twenty dollars. I think the membership as far as right now is about nine hundred and sixty dollars, less than what it was in 2012. Will that very true to what we charge? But you get very many benefits from that. Let me share one with you. You had a teacher this year that got a grant. We give out over fifty thousand, twenty-five thousand dollars in grants this year. We're going to give another twenty-five thousand. So we give you fifty thousand dollars in grant, and I get that from our different organizations. That's not tax dollars. The other thing is, you won a scholarship as a result of Thomas coming to the conference. So I mentioned Tim, and you're a member of ASBO. I made the presentation tonight. It's very important that you stay active with these organizations. So you can have people, so that's just myself, Andrew and Tim coming in to explain information that you really should know as a board member.
Thank you very much, Dr. Albert. I appreciate you, I was a little, I appreciate you coming in and sharing that information with us. At this time, does the board have any questions for Dr. Albert? No questions at this time, Dr. Albert. Thank you so much for joining us, the hall of Pittsburgh, I believe. You'd love with your keynote tomorrow.
Yeah, well, thank you. And once again, board members, thank you for serving us very, thank you so much. But I do appreciate you serving. Thank you.
Ready, Dr. Albert? All right, our next presentation is going to be about Mr. Robert Dan, that, of Port Royal Police Associates regarding the question, the access.
Good evening. I'm with Mr. Dan, my name's Kevin. I actually have two for lunch tonight, so thanks for your time. I have some familiarity with what you guys think. I think I was on my own town school board for eight years, so I'm familiar. Same with your side of the table. Bob's wife was on the school board for many years. So we're familiar with what you guys do. We appreciate the time you're doing and also appreciate having us on. Just briefly, to give you a little background on who we are. Port Royal Police, we represent the district, quite here, we do real estate taxes and they just ask you. So we've been doing this work for a while. I was actually here when we were hired. So I came in front of the school board probably nine years ago. And just like Dan, gave a little bit of a presentation of what we do. And I can tell you the reason, one of the reasons at least that we were hired was that the district thought that they could do better with their collections at the time. We were currently using the county tax number in their collections. We can distinguish ourselves from the taxes during, we'll go into that a little bit in detail. But at the time, there was some dissatisfaction with the collection rates. One thing that was of interest too, is I remember seeing the meeting, I didn't speak until the end of the meeting. So I was able to actually watch that whole school board meeting. And the board at that time was rather, it seemed rather divided, at least just from the interactions with the board at that time on a lot of different issues. And I was glad to say, when I spoke, people actually seemed to be unified with, yeah, this seems like a good idea. So we were hired for the district. And including the materials we got to answer our collection. So I think that's important for you to see, how we've been doing, we have three years, how we're doing. And looking at the numbers, we're doing really well. Our collection rates total by percentage of the amount of that's actually collectible has been generally ninety-four point six percent. And if you take out this year, because you've only had the account so far about four months this year, our collection rate's actually over a hundred and one percent. And that's with adding interest. Because under our process, at one point in our process, when we file in, interest starts to creep. That money comes to the district. So there's some benefit, the time value is being lost during the collection process. That comes to the district and thus brings that collection rate up over a hundred percent. So a very strong collection rate over the eight years. One figure that might not be quite as obvious, which is, this is something that we do promote. Our firm actually represents more than ten percent of school districts in the state. And as actually, we named Tim Schrom, mentioned a couple of times, the Salico. Tim hired us when he was with Salico, so we take pride in that. Because again, Tim is someone who's really well-known at ASBO, he's an numbers guy. And he looked at what we do, he was at Salico, and decided to hire us too. But one of the things that we promote is when we represent our clients, there's usually some portion of population that we're collecting, and that's delinquent, that actually have the ability to pay, just like in choosing to not to. And our process creates incentive to pay on the early start of process. And it results that about eighty percent of our school district clients see a reduction in the number of delinquent accounts the district has a few years after we hired them. And for Daniel Boone, the delinquency rate's been reduced by thirty-nine percent. Significant. And that's a significant number of people that are now, haven't been paying, are now paying on time. And so that, that brings a couple things from a financial perspective. A, obviously you're getting the money from Gaster. It's a lot easier to do your budgets when you have that money coming from current versus delinquent. But at the same time, when you use the county to collect the delinquent taxes, and even us, the county takes a five percent commission on delinquencies. By helping reduce your delinquencies, you're saving five percent for every person that's now paying on time. So that's a service on top of really what you're doing. And you're asking us to collect delinquent accounts, but we're actually creating a system where now people are, well, people paying on time. So that's great. Another factor that's interesting to look at is, there's a column, says number of calls without any attorney fees. And what that means is basically, the first two steps in our process, we don't consider the attorney fees steps. They're actually rather benign. First step in our process, it's called validation notice, only comes at a cost of twenty-five dollars. So for someone who's just, this is the first time doing, when they, this is an oversight, no one's complaining about paying extra twenty-five dollars, in and out, quickly. There's no attorney fees added. District pays nothing for it. Tell us we collected from them, twenty-five dollars, you get your money, that's it. Second step in our process is if you notice a fee shift, and that's the one that tells us the property owner going forward, we're gonna be adding attorney fees. That only comes at a cost of forty dollars for certified notice, which is about forty-six, forty-seven dollars. Again, no attorney fee added. So by that number showing that fifty-six, fixes fifty-six of paying without attorney fees, that means they're responding early in our process. And one of the nice things that we do that distinguishes ourselves from when the county cuts is that, we have a big staff, we have the staff of burger-eating people. We can work with properties, we all learn flexible in-Atlantis, we have a hardship program. Properties can go on our website, look at their balances, pay online. So for those people that wanna pay, maybe need a little more assistance, we're able to do that. The county, they're not equipped to do that from staff-wise. And legally, they don't have the ability to do that type of stuff. They proceed under a different law than we do. They proceed under the Rosetta Tax Law. We proceed under the Civil Rights Tax Means Act. So there's a lot of flexibility that we can get. It looks good for our clients. And you'll see the materials, we actually get bank notes fairly often from different properties, which to me is always a little bit amazing, because I mean, I know for the school board, saying you're just on the table, people have time to come to your meetings and say, great job, thanks for the public service, everything's great. Usually, there's some kind of issue that they wanna talk about. And the same thing for us. So we get bank notes from people that are actually collecting against you. I think that's just a good sign that we're treating the public well. And that's, for us, that's a really important thing, because we represent over two hundred clients throughout the state. About sixty school districts, there's also a lot of municipalities. But everyone we're dealing with is a constituent, everyone's a property owner. So we treat them well, and we try to treat them with respect. And the reason again is, if we didn't do that, we wouldn't be in two hundred of us. People wouldn't have this time, because it reflects poorly on the board. So we really try to work with people. Doesn't mean that a hundred percent of people are happy. But we really try to work with them in a way that can give them some positive options in the beginning. They can, they can work with their delinquency and again, pay overtime and leave. For those people that choose not to do that or don't wanna pay, then they're missing major ramifications through the influence of our process where fees are added. I think part of the reason that you've asked us to come out today was with regard to share of sale process. Bob's an expert in that, so any questions you have, I'll have to answer them, go through our process. But the reality is, that's the final step in our process. There's about eight steps that happen to get to that point. So if someone is listed for share of sale, that means they've had a lot of opportunities to pay. That teeth is important. But the reality is, for our firm, we rarely have to sell property. Just, I just mentioned to business manager last night, right, for earlier today. We had about eighty-one thousand accounts that came to our firm last year for questions, for all our clients throughout the state. We sold twenty-four properties last year. Two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four properties, so a whole year. We really don't sell a lot of properties. Even listed for sale, we list, I think it was under two hundred, we listed for sale. So not even that many get to that point. But you do need that teeth. And for your district, we've never sold a property in eight years, we've never had to sell one property. We've had to list fifteen properties. We've listed fifteen properties for sale, all that were paid. So that process is working. We also, when the property's ready to go listed for sale, we come to the district and say, we retain judgment, it's the last step in our process of the sale, they've got all these notices, they've awarded them. Please confirm the list of properties for sale. So we actually come to you. I'd like, the county wouldn't do that. If you were, the county's doing your collections right now, there's no, there's no conversation. And then if that's the point, the property's ready for sale, it's totally listed for sale. There's the fact that years ago, either county was a property listed for sale and the underlying debt was six dollars each. But it's due, and that's the way it works. There's no conversation, a bond is pressed, and who's for it? For us, we look at every property before we sell, to make sure this is everything went correctly. And you know, every avenue that we've had to try to get the money and we take it. So again, it's rare. Over again, over eight, two years, we've only put two properties listed for sale. A couple more ready for it to be listed again. But if history is, continue the way it's been, there's a very good chance that a couple that are needing to be listed for sale now will pay like the fifteen before that was listed for sale. And people realize that when, you know, when a property's listed for sale, the people that think they can get away with not paying, that news spreads that, you know, the district is managing it by the mind. So hopefully, people come sooner. But the numbers do reflect that, you know, again, over fifty percent are coming to us within those first two steps and taking some type of action, you're paying, don't wanna pay, like, not working through our collection process. I'm gonna talk about, if you wanna add a question with regard to sales.
Sure. I know there was a couple of emails that people had questions about. There's a couple of key points in our process that are very important. First is, we do collect under the municipal claims and tax means act, which means we actually have to take a judgment in the particular case against the property that's at issue. And at that point, there was actually a deputy sheriff who served the complaint. We called it a sarpocious on the property owner. And we see a lot of people pay up when they, or we get a lot of responses when they get served. Once we take the judgment, we then, I think Kevin pointed out that we do send the notices out to you folks to determine whether or not we wanna execute on these properties. The reason why we send this out to you folks is because you know that, your neighbors, we, we're in King of Russia in Allentown. I know probably everybody in Allentown, you know, Bethel. But, you know, here, you folks know these people. And if there's a particular situation that they know about, that we don't know about, and that's why we ask you to take a look at that list of properties that we're about to file a writ of execution. Once we file the writ of execution, it's three months from the date of the filing till the property is actually exposed to share of sale. And again, in that position, in that, on this process, the property owner has to get a notice of sale. There's a process server that goes out and actually serves the property. So again, at that point, we get a lot of responses as we sort of that. I can tell you that I've done over, I think it was Port Royal for over twenty years. I've done a lot of share of sales. Right up until the end, we were willing to talk to people, willing to work with them, because we want, we want to pay them. We don't want, we don't wanna be in a situation where we take some weeks home. That's the last thing we want. I've actually been at the courthouse steps and people, you know, do bring money and take a property off the share of sale. So the first sale that we actually had is, is what we call an upset sale. And at that sale, we announced an upset price, which includes all the taxes and municipal claims that are due on the property. And if we don't get that, that amount at the sale, we then postpone the sale and petition the court to sell it free and clear. And again, at that point in time too, we sent another notice to the property owner that here, here's where we're at. This is really your last chance. Please make contact with us and we'll work something out. We get it to that point, we expose it to sale. They still have the right to redeem the property within nine months after the deed has been acknowledged by, you know, the recorder of deeds office. So there's plenty of steps along the way that property owners can get their property back or keep their property. And we work with them throughout the entire process. So if anybody has any particular questions, specific questions about share of sales, they would have to answer.
And so to be clear, these property owners, they have a solid payment?
Well, sometimes they do respond. A lot of times, they'll, we'll set up a payment plan with them. They default on their payment plan, a lot of times we put them back on another payment plan, they get default. Usually, when they get to the point of share of sale, it's, it's time for something to happen.
And the state does have something for low-income seniors?
Yes, property attachment every day. Yes, that is a very popular program of senior citizens. We don't get involved in that, but a lot of people are.
Do you, can you give them resources, things that you, like, say?
I know, I tell senior citizens about the property attachment every day. And we get a lot of people that come in.
We put stuff on our website, so I'm not sure if that's for different programs on there. But a lot of times, it's a P-H-A-T, there's different programs that are established. We usually put it on the front of our website to give people the information. And we can't, we can't act as a liaison necessarily, though in the past, we've actually been in touch with some of those programs directly to make sure that it's running correctly, we can help. Because again, we have a lot of clients, we do a lot of this work, sometimes we're more performance than the state sometimes to deal with that and stuff. But we'll, if there's stuff that we put on our website, we put it out there for properties. Because again, our goal is to get paid, if that money can come from a third source, a third-party source, and help the property owner, that's great. That solves our problems. Yeah, the reality is, I mean, I think probably you could say too, most of the properties that go to sales, it's usually not even one year's worth of taxes that we're doing. We proceed, we proceed on a specific period to take it to sale. But oftentimes, there's gold, two years of taxes that haven't been paid. And at that point, there's really recourse in the property to be listed for sale. The district wants the money to come in. But again, even at that point in the process, there's a hardship program. So I mean, our hardship program, the way that works is, you know, some calls are all this, it describes the situation. You don't even have to say necessarily, we're in hardship. If it's obvious, this is the situation, there's a hardship. We're gonna say, oh, we can send a hardship application, and they can pull it online from our website. And they fill out the application, because their assets, their liabilities, their special circumstances, and specifically how much they would pay in line. And what we've found over the years, and I've been, Bob's been here twenty years, and I've been here close to eighteen years, so we've seen a lot of this. Most people that fill out the hardship application are in hardships. And it's not something that people tend to play games with. They're not taking the time to fill out that application. Because again, it's the two things worth of information. But they take the time to fill it out, they're usually in hardship situation. And as long as our client permits us, they said their means to pay, what they have the ability to pay, what they say they can pay in line, that's usually what Tim thinks. So this will work for some who have the property potential listed for sale. It's a hardship, and again, we're not gonna sell the property. We're not gonna pay overtime, even in small amounts, again, as long as the district's okay with it. And obviously, ninety-nine percent of our clients very much want us to run a hardship program. They're very happy about hardship program. And because for us, like, it's not, you know, we're providing a service to the district, but obviously, we're a business, we wanna make money. We're not making money for those situations. But we're willing to do that for our clients, because that's what we wanted to do. They don't wanna, they don't wanna kick some out of other houses. And just the same way, we look at this stuff and we feel like if we do the right thing by our clients and by their constituents, we're gonna be there a long time. So even during COVID, when COVID hit in two thousand twenty, we actually recharged our clients, ourselves and said, you know, we don't think we should be doing active collections right now. We're not gonna make any money, but this is not the right time for us to be sort of having properties right when COVID hits to get money. So for pretty much every client, we waited until the counties went green again. If you remember, they had sort of that stoplight, it read, you know, green. When everything was red, we're like, you know, we don't think we should collect. And then as the counties started going green again, and the business coming back to normal, which is about two or three months, then our clients were like, oh, we should, let's start the collections again. So we're cognizant of making sure that we guys look good and doing the right thing. And for that reason, we have a lot of clients who've been doing this a long time, who've been doing this for thirty-five years, and that's okay. Like again, it sounds like, it sounds like, you know, a lie is coming from us. We are, we care about public service, we care about doing right by the communities. Because again, if we do, we're gonna get a lot of places, and we're gonna have, you know, we're gonna be there a long time. Our clients would definitely be there. So we sort of look out for you that way. Because again, if we give the district a black eye, we're going, no one's gonna keep us. So we're careful of that. Like, the hardship program is available to very, so the reality is, I mean, most of the time, when people do sell properties, and we never sold one here, but most of the properties that we've sold over the years, it's usually someone just walked away with the property. It's not some exactly living in a property that's, especially someone who just doesn't wanna pay anymore, whether the property's underwater or whatever. It's rare that if you're selling a property that's actually owner-occupied and the person had it just to keep their house.
Right, so just to make sure that I heard you correctly. So you were in the rest of this twenty seconds, now do the, what's, what's up to be discussed first, right? So you said that there have been fifteen other properties that have gotten to the point where they're supposed to be there and then it's a safe, uh, to share of sale?
Fifteen are actually listed. Fifteen that we got the thumbs up.
But zero that, that direction sold.
Zero sold.
That's why I wanted to hear.
Fifteen listed, zero sold, that's right.
And you were saying, if I was to break it all, but you.
And you were saying, if I was to correct it, like, shoot, list the sheriff's sales app, would you trigger so you could start the hardship application process?
No, it's a daily one. But I mean, that is a time, my point, I guess, was that it doesn't go away. Like, it's not like, all right, once we get the judgment, you're done. Once we get the judgment, you still can get in line, you still do hardship. Like, it's not, it doesn't go away. There's, there's some, there's.
And you can tell when you're talking to these people, when they contact the office, that's the most important thing. When they get the notice of sheriff's sale, that they actually contact the office. And we'd like, we said, we have eighty people, we won't have phones, talk with these folks. You can tell who the people are who have real hardships. And we make sure that those people get a hardship application, we figure out the way to.
And if I was understanding the timeline correctly, like, if you were to go to move ahead with listing the sheriff's sale, there's still, there's three months more to treat that action, and by the time the action gets listed, and then there's.
So there's, so if you were to approve your, our recommendation, we would get that back. It'll probably take a month or so before we actually have the paperwork together. We file the writ of execution. There, there's three months from that point to the date which is first sale, it's the first exposed to the sale. So during that period of time, people have the opportunity to call us.
And then, and I thought you were on for those six months, I was understanding that anyway, this process?
Oh yeah, we always continue the sale. So what happens is, if they, if they call us up and they get out a payment plan, we continue the sale until their payment plan is completed.
So there's a lot of sales?
Very, 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 very.
But the, the, I think the importance though is that, I mean, we begin, I do a lot of speaking in the past about some of the statewide organizations. Tim's actually asked me to speak during COVID, because he had a interest in collections, we did such a big percentage of the school issues. But the reality is that if you have a collection process that doesn't have final step like this, a sale, it's not gonna work. Which is not gonna work, people realize, and get to the end of the year, and pay what it's gonna need. And so it's important to have some teeth that be in the process. Based on our numbers, the teeth don't happen that often. And even when they're, they're, they're used, there's still a way out potential for something to way out.
Um, I have a couple of questions, quite a few questions, um, if you could just bear with me. This is just purely for me to make sure I am understanding in depth your processes and the situation of our current residents without violating any collection laws. I'm a collector, so I got their, until I get the resident's information. I did my typical skip tracing, and I was able to pull the data that these particular residents are in their eighties. So the first one in my head is, they're not gonna go onto your website and see where hardships programs are available. Some of these tenants are, maybe they're not as savvy. I don't know. My, my grandma's pretty savvy, she's not like typical, she's in her nineties, but I can deeply understand who everybody is. So I guess my first question is then, who is responsible to provide these hardship assistance programs to these residents who may necessarily need it? Is it the district's responsibility? Is it the, the personal guarantor's responsibility? Or is it your responsibility?
So, I'm not sure who the person or guarantor is that you're referring to?
The person, the resident, the one who's primarily responsible.
The homeowner?
The homeowner.
Okay. So is there a, they really have to contact us in order for us to understand that they've got hardship?
But that information, in the paperwork though, that they get, it's all on options. So like, they, they, they tell us, and they contact us and do a, a collection program, so that's, it's there when they receive. We don't, we don't, we don't do any done-in calls, and we don't call people. It's all by the legal process, by the law that we perceive, and it's all paperwork. So they receive stuff from us. There's some, at some point in time, I mean, you get before they get to sale, before they leave, leave contacts before that, there's some duty in the property to say, I got contacted. And I mean, like, we can't, we're not gonna call.
So do you, I guess enough questions. Do you run your credit, your low, your modern, modern, modern high high risk? Is he going to not be paying other creditors, not, not us? And how do you determine that?
We, we don't do a credit check. We do, at some point, do a skip trace to find out how old they are. We also do check to see if they're paying accounting taxes.
Okay. And that's how you determine whether or not they're sticking their foot down, because they don't have to pay accounting taxes. That was part I was not aware of. Like, how do you guys determine that? And I guess, like, you guys come to the district, because they're in our community, and in the event that we're, we're a state, you guys do have. That's what you're looking for us to also kind of add out and put, and put on. Okay. So I'm gonna make sure I understand that. I guess, like, my, I'm familiar, the third-party collection, it's this, like, this, my, my issue. So I'm not, I'm not saying that everything just from the, the time really being, like, you guys, it's really. Some of the times, when I find this third-party collection, is they're, they're trying to shoot for more of a higher monthly repayment plan, and very seldom other employees budge on the monthly payment, causing it to be a little more difficult, to have their repayment extended for five years. Is that, do you typically offer lower monthly repayment plans than those that are on the big ones?
So we, our, when we're hiring issue, we work with our clients to establish what the management structures would be. Because the key with this type of work is, you treat everyone equally. No one's treated differently, everyone's treated the same. So typically for payment plan structures, for most of our clients, I'm pretty sure yours is probably the same way, we try to have our payment plans up to six months. And it's stagger based on the amount of, it's like one month, three months, or six months. And the reason we keep it at six months, is we reduce, keep a payment plan too long, then that person never becomes current. And our goal is obviously to get people to not only pay what's outstanding, but currently. But six months would be too short for a property owner, that's when their hardship program comes in. And they go to a hardship application. And again, as I mentioned before, the hardship application, they're not they, have the ability to dictate how long and how much they pay. So they may pay thirty dollars a month, and they may be paying for years. But if that's okay with our client, that's okay with us. But typically, outside the hardship program, we cap those who are paying for lenses six months. And again, that's probably why this is so successful, we reduce your expenses, because if, again, you stretch it out too long, they're always paying billings, they don't have the money to pay.
My concern is when I consider, knowing that there are folks definitely on this income, um, unless they owe their courses, that way personally. Um, I guess my concern is, is we can go to a sheriff's sale, and I say, well, jump, you jump in, and, and make sure that that can happen. I just feel like it's a wash, it's a repeat, it replaces a small situation because of their economic status. I guess that's my major concern. If you need to share, so it's fine. But if nobody back, uh, square one, if someone does jump in, I guess it's a one jump in. That's just my, that's just my concern.
But this, this is way, again, compared to what you had before us. Before us, it was the county that's collecting. There's no conversation, there's no decision making. Once there's claims of the county, the school has no control. So with us, there's local control. Again, we set these parameters when we're hired, and they can still be readjusted. But the reality is that our hardship program, it's a godsend for something you really can't pay, right? I mean, but again, there's some bonus on the property, it's contacted, it's another side. And we can't, you know what I mean? We can't knock on their door and say, we wanna help you. But I mean, like, and by the time it's listed for sale, again, we're talking about eight different opportunities.
But there's eight processes that you have to handle, not one phone call.
Well, one, and one, well, one of those notices is being shared by the sheriff. So the sheriff is holding out, handing them paperwork. So the extent that they haven't seen their mail, whatever that excuse could be, the sheriff is now at their door handing them the paperwork. You have to, I mean, at some point in time, you have to do something.
Well, where I come from is, is it's just a very in-person process. As a servant by the sheriff, you get information from that. And everything else is led via letter, and we, we, there's a major call, and some of them are all just going to answer the phone call. Um, I guess it's just, I, I'm just not sure if they all have the, it's all set to ensure that, I guess that the information is secure, considering you look older credit, older credit, you don't see who they're paying, if they're not paying.
Right. The other thing too is that I, I do, you can, you can check from the exception of records too, what's going on. Because obviously, if it's a property that's expensive, there's probably a greater likelihood that people that are living there have greater income. It's, it's just.
For equity.
Yeah, for equity.
Did, did you ever shoot for the credit? From a, like, you need to shoot for the credit from a person?
I think that they don't involve into third-party, I think it's all, they're assuming.
What's that?
On the version.
We don't check credit.
We don't report credit.
I, I'm a bank, I'm not in property, I'm not.
How many others do you, if they went into the county, instead of the year, do you, if they know?
No. So the county, the county's process is a lot different. And there's, there's just, frankly, there's a lot of inaction, and this is not cut on Berks County. That's not counted on any county. But their, their process is different as a result of the fact that there's a lot to collect. So for a county, the county obviously has its own due, it's taxes to collect. Any school bishop is using the county, so right now, we have four districts in Berks County. So there's a lot of districts that are probably still using the county. And then any municipality that's collecting taxes, that isn't using it by the, by the, like us, is using the county. The county gets every year a lot of taxes at one point. And as a result of that, the structure is created for them to collect those taxes in a way with relatively small step of budget to do that. So their, under their procedures, still real estate tax, all that mentioned before. They send out, so everything, the taxes are due the year, they're due by July thirty-first. They send one notice saying that you're doing the taxes. Pretty much a full year goes by before there's any interaction. And then the next step would be to list the properties for sale. So the second year, sort of the similar procedure that Bob mentioned already had, there's a, there's basically an upset sale, which is subject to, that's year two. And they'll sell it subject to millions. If it doesn't sell in year three, there's a judicial settlement. There's not a lot of interaction, there's not ability to pay the claims. I don't know if they had any type of partnership program, but I don't think.
They do for senior citizens.
For some, yes, no?
Well, I mean, in the statute.
Every county does it differently, but it's very, the county commissioners basically set the procedures. It doesn't come from these control clients. And there's ramifications in default, for example, on, on background. But there's like, there's, there's more particular rules, with us, we're a little bit more flexible. Again, our goal is to, to get our clients paid and not sell property. And not to say that that's their goal, but they don't have the staff to individually monitor the county. And every action that we take on the county, someone looks at it. Before we take our next, there's never a button that's pressed. Someone's looking at making sure this was done, service was obtained, they received this, this letter hasn't come back, and then we take our next step. And that happens every single time we do something. And because of that, there's a lot of place to be at. Again, the costs go up over time, and that next shift, they have costs, really is what creates a lot of people to pay early, or to pay on time, because they realize that in the past, where the benefit was be able to hold the money in their pocket and pay what was due for them, now that they see it's gonna cost them more over time, I'm not gonna pay a different bill, I'm gonna pay the school issues bill. There's no financial benefit or means. But, no, the county's process is very, it's prolonged in the sense that, like, there's no action, there's no, there's no incentives that are created, and there's no word of work going on. So I mean, if someone really wants to deal with this obligation, they're gonna be able to, with us, a lot easier than them. But at the same time, under both processes, like, you have, like, you have to come forward to do something. And you can't, you know what I mean? We're not, we're not knocking on those voices and saying, oh, why don't you, why don't you do it? There's some responsibilities of the homeowner, something, everyone knows the active data taxes, and it's not a surprise. And again, we're, we're, we're all to work with you. You gotta, you gotta get on the front of policy.
So can I just ask one simple question? Can we talk about eight steps? I mean, what's, what's average time, eight steps you take? I imagine over a year.
It's gonna be over a year, and yeah, technically it can be fast, but it's not. I mean, because again, we, we never, we don't rush the process, because we want people to contact us. So every step in our process, there's a timeframe for them to do something. And even with the sheriff, that Bob mentioned, the sheriff going out, that's the fifth step in our process after the lien. And that has to be served by the sheriff. It's not only service time is, we like, I mean, it's up to them to do it, we have no control of the process. But that's fine. That gives the property a little bit more time in that step in the process too, to sort of, to do something. But every step has at least thirty to forty days, sometimes even a little bit more, or any one's going on. People letter comes back in the mail, or send a different letter, or things like that. But there's time between each step to do something. I mean, it's, just, just so you know, the properties that we listed for sale previously, fifteen properties are listed for sale by the time.
Your district.
In your district, by the time that property went, was listed for sale, there were forty-two months still. Forty-two months had passed. So again, hasn't been rushed at all. People have had times, three and a half years on a specific, and it's probably multiple years, right? So they haven't yet listed. Like, again, they're earliest, the one that was listed for sale was eighteen months. That was the earliest. The range was from eighteen to sixty-one months. So they've had opportunities, and they're like, we're not, we're not running to sell ever. But when it's time for sale, again, it's, we're coming to you, and we're expecting you to sign off on it, because we've done everything we can do. Again, it's probably multiple years worth. I mean, Bob showed me one before, it's, I think it was six years of delinquency. He's like, it's time to list it for sale. They had, here, they had a list, I mean, this is just one of them, but I mean, six years worth of delinquency, it's like, it's time to have a sale.
Well, but we know all the taxes for each of the years properly.
Right.
I guess what the point was, is we're.
We're not rushing.
So they're, so whether they're getting letters or phone calls, they're getting the letter, they digest it, they, before it goes to the next letter?
They've had a lot of notices and a lot of time, and right, even though, I'm talking about eight steps. Again, that's for one year. They have multiple years. We don't go to eight steps for every year, but we go up to the lien, which is four steps. So we need to be looking at that much time, assuming that some of us have multiple years of delinquency, we're getting way more than we can test. They're getting four more each year. And they don't need to be calling against the property. They know, they know this is happening. There's some responsibility on that other property. You know, we try to do what we can, but at some point in time, but again, no one likes to, you listen to Robert, if you sell, but there's fifteen that have been very successful. They've all paid. So this process is working, it's, it's working, and there's a fairness to it. And the fairness to it, both people pay their taxes on time. And that's, and that's the difference between, when I'm speaking here today in front of you, when I was on the school, when I was on the school, I'm used to seeing this, like, and the audience didn't tend to like what I was saying, for whatever reason. They didn't tend to like what I'm saying. And when we come from Florida, I'm speaking, oftentimes, the people in the audience are like, we should hire them now, like, why don't we should hire them? And when I go to prove out what we do, because they don't wanna hear that someone's not paying their taxes, and the rates are going up, and there's money on the street. So we solve that problem by bringing in, we solve the problem by reducing the delinquencies. And for that one, the second population that actually needs some help, like, we're gonna work with them. And sometimes there's, there's certain people that, that don't take advantage, I don't know their reasons, but we get to the point where we have listed for sale. But again, based on our records here, it hasn't been often, in eight years, fifteen in eight years, and everyone's paid. So.
I'm not asking for any specifics, I didn't look at it, but do we have any issue?
Yeah, that's where we're here.
Well, no, I, I didn't.
Yeah, there's something that's ready to be listed for sale.
I figured that, I just didn't see that.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I think the point is that you have given ample time to at least have a phone call or, or call and contact you or something.
And based on issue, there's a good chance that we'll list it for sale, I can bet.
Yeah.
And that's what I was saying before, it seemed to me that there was at least a two-year gap from the initial ask by the time they acted. Worth of the whole process.
And the average is three and a half years for the fifteen. So it's a lot of time, but yeah.
Do you, do you feel good now about the fact that on the letter itself, it tells them sources, maybe? I mean, I think that was your question?
Yeah, I, well, I.
Maybe they don't go to the website, like, the letter itself?
Yeah, definitely not, at least.
Yeah, over here.
That we're, that we're discussing. You can yell at them if you want, you know, let them, you know, but it's not, if you already know they were in collections, you don't need like ten letters. I mean, they know, they know.
Right, when the sheriff's.
They know, they know, they have.
Yeah, the sheriff shows up.
And when the sheriff shows up, I think, I think they might know, they might not know, but I'm just questioning regarding the collection process, only because I'd like to know what they're to go through. Because I don't go then, I don't live like that, I don't know if there's a way she was in that everything. And they're gonna turn X, Y, Z, and R, like, years. I mean, and not once anybody communicated an issue, and not once anybody submitted a hardship agreement. You got this, you know, that's my only, that's my only caveat, is what is better way available to them. And if they have to call you to get that information, if it would be rude to your site with that information, there might be some gap there. It's my only reservation, but be honest.
Can I just ask, can I just ask you a question? My suggestion is that I just make these meetings, which is why I'm around to you. So when we do this, we just have to sign a contract. Like, can they pay, like, one yard? So, or? Focus in two ways, like, if they have, but just tell them, this page is gonna be changed.
Yeah, it's like literally.
I got you.
It's usually four as long as.
Okay, the community members, so the election manager, the monies, like, she's like, I don't have that far. You know, she's like, they won't take checks, not quite hard, whatever, but, you know, I hope they have.
We take checks.
So.
Do you take checks?
Well, you take checks, but Keith hasn't, none of them.
Well, so, no, Keith, they can take checks. The problem that they have is when they get to the end of the year, you have to. The problem that they have is when they get to the end of the year, you have to have a certified check from the bank. Because they have to close their books on the thirty-first. That, that's, that's when it's time. Anything else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
All right, so moving on to segment three A one, three A seven two. I'm looking for.
Sorry, I have a quick question, a quick question that I did want to bring up about River Rock. So River Rock, since you, it's about three hundred thousand dollars a year cost.
Do you need a second? Do you need a second?
No, it's okay. You want to make that one?
I'm gonna change, I'll push.
All right, all right. So we are required to educate students while they are in a suspension slash expulsion area, or at all?
I wouldn't classify it as a suspension or expulsion. Usually a student, if they end up in an alternative location, may have been suspended. Um, and would not have been settled, this is almost an immediate step.
Okay.
Um, generally, we're told to have non-suspension education in the population.
So since we now have our virtual academy, can we not utilize that instead of paying, just on the air, the whole taxes?
So it's not uncommon for school districts to leave all their virtual academies or, uh, once they have an established virtual academy like we do now, um, or that some alternate places, uh, oftentimes there's situations that may involve, uh, say, lending. Uh, it's not uncommon for that to go down that path instead. Um, like a lot of things with education, there are many different things that we need to look at. But your general premise is something.
And the, the, sort of, the other side is where it's an alternative education, you're just not, so it's, you have your own issues. And part of it is that direct, you know, intervention that they get, when at River Rock, the student will rehabilitate them so that they can get back to, to the regular general education program. And for some of these students going out, you know, they're likely to have, you know, a local.
No, and, and, to that point, most of the students that are attending do have some type of special education identification. And in most cases, there are labor plans that are wrapped around that student, which would not be beneficial in a virtual setting. So for the few that could apply to thinking is sound, but that's not the majority of students that are there then.
Okay.
And is this one of the few schools that we send kids to, or alternative, like, special lab facilities, that kids are not allowed here? Uh, do you consider?
We do have a number of different facilities that we do send to. Um, this is one of our more preferred, both the home location, as well as support and cost.
But again, this is sort of being, well, we also have like this, that's what's.
There are, yes.
All over the place.
Yes.
So this is just not a, you.
Correct, and, and a lot of that is dependent on student, yes. Any other questions or comments after three A one through three seven two?
I appreciate having a couple of questions, so any question for, to add, I was very happy.
All right, so then can I get a motion for three A one through three seven?
How do you mean?
Hang on, I'm just checking. Who made the motion? I could let it go ahead, it's what you did, so. Come back and be again. Sorry. I need to pay attention. Um, this is Albrecht. She like.
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Beckman?
Yes.
Mr. Ratch?
Yes.
Mrs. Jurick?
Yes.
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
Mrs. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes, and Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Nine yeses. Moving on to personal consent items. I have four A one through four A four. Hey, motion?
Motion.
Second. And Mr. Scott. Um, Mrs. Albrecht?
Yeah.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Beckman?
Yes.
Mr. Ratch?
Yes.
Mrs. Jurick?
Yes.
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
Mrs. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes, and Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Under twenty, it's added consent items.
Number eight, four three.
Five A three. Five A three. Yes, five A one.
Can we get a motion for, I can be a motion for five A one and two.
Exclusively five A three, yes. Can we get a second for that? Okay. And Mr. Scott, can I get a vote for items five A one and two? Sure. Mrs. Albrecht?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Beckman?
Yes.
Mr. Ratch?
Yes.
Mrs. Jurick?
Yes.
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
Mrs. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes, and Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Nine yeses. Thank you, Bucky. All right, then moving on to like the five A three, which is a motion to improve participation in a public park, so that the tier two school and not to exceed close of thirty-five hundred dollars for a year as presented. So just to refresh, do we have?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Okay.
One second.
Okay. Okay. So just to refresh on that, there's eighteen school districts that are participating in this with C I U. There were thirteen that voted yes to approve it to the voting note, three are still to be determined, and one of those three is us. And two of the C T Cs voted yes on that proposal.
I just want to say, I don't want Mr. Volker to get crucified for bringing this to us. I appreciate that, I appreciate that he did give us a chance to vote on it. Um, because I'm sure we found out later on, we were one of the few that didn't do it, and then are like, "Well, why didn't you ask us?" So I understand why you didn't ask us earlier. Um, and I appreciate that you asked us now, but I don't feel like that's the time to do it now, because there's enough gain for us to do it.
I, I appreciate the perspective that you understand the, the way that you're assigned, thank you, thank you.
I.
Any comments?
Yeah, I just don't think the district is in a place right now to spend money on that advertising, just to keep up with the Joneses. Right now, we're just not focused on that joke, so I just, I honestly think. But thank you, you know, for just allowing us to talk to you, I appreciate it.
I, I, I don't think, I think I should, I'm just a fool, I think we need to actually stop. Thank you. Anyone, anyone else starting?
I just want, I want to just say, Dr. Hackman, it's not her, but she's, uh, she's, she's from the, the C I U, and is a very capable head of C I U. It is not, you know, with my feelings on whether or not spending their time or not, reflection on, um, her leadership or her initiative. Um, but, um, I'm also feeling like sending that money, um, to be put to use more annually in our district, maybe isn't the right call right now.
I agree.
I would also just share, that, knowing the outcome of the vote, I will make sure that the message goes back to the person who, you know, it's not fair, Hackman. It's, it's all ownership.
How little hearts on the, pardon, little heart on that, yeah, from us. Yeah, yeah, from us. All right, so who made motion to that?
Oh, we've been, we can.
Okay, so now, uh, Mrs. Albrecht?
No.
Okay, Mrs. Bell?
No.
Mrs. Beckman?
No.
Mr. Ratch?
No.
Mr. Jurick?
No.
Uh, Mrs. Markle?
No.
Mrs. Olson?
No.
Mr. Scott, no, Mrs. Thompson?
No.
Sure, two hearts on there.
Two hearts.
Yeah. That's not a no's.
I'm not going to share that I know.
You're Joe, right? Are you Joe? Yeah, I got your letter, I, I hope your voice is okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, all right. All right, then, under programs I consider, these, and then six A one through six A fourteen.
How much?
One second.
All right, comments? All right, Mr. Scott, can you, sure. Um, Mrs. Albrecht?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Beckman?
Yes.
Mr. Ratch?
Yes.
Mrs. Jurick?
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
Mrs. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes, and Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Yes.
Thank you, Bucky. Moving on to personal items, items seven A one through seven A three, I have a motion for those.
Oh, motion.
Second.
I'll second.
Comments? Mr. Scott. Mrs. Albrecht?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Beckman?
Yes.
Mr. Ratch?
Yes.
Mrs. Jurick?
Yes.
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
Mrs. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes, and Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Nine yeses. And then Mr. Scott, please. Sure, um, this is a surprise. Mrs. Albrecht?
Yes. Yes.
Second.
One second.
All right, Mr. Scott, please. Sure, um, this is a surprise. Mrs. Albrecht?
Yes. Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Beckman?
Yes.
Mr. Ratch?
Yes.
Mr. Jurick?
Yes.
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
Mrs. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes, and Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Nine yeses. That goes to seven. We have nothing under due business. We have presentations going by the public on issues. All right, seeing none, we are indeterminate. Oh, sorry. Who get the best, and the second, thank you.
Who was the second?
Chris. And then, there we go.
First day of school.
Thank you.